Councilmember Eklund?
Here.
And Councilmember Lukin.
Here.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Eklund, I do want to mention, I do have a TAM board meeting tonight that's at seven o'clock. Based off of how this meeting goes, we might be able to get everything done in time, but if you see me quietly get up and leave at six forty-five, it's not because I'm bored, it's because I'm going to another meeting, so.
Great, and I really appreciate you coming here first and then going to that other meeting that I know is very important. So, we'll take, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, Ammuth?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Drew, seconded by Councilmember Lukin, all, and Terry, could you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye, and thank you very much, Terry. At this point, I'd like you all to meet, if you haven't met before, our city attorney, Jeff Walters, and he has been working for the city of Navajo for over two decades, and him and his firm have been doing an outstanding job, and they also do a lot of other cities in the North Bay, so we get the advantage of a lot of work that the other cities are doing as well. So, Jeff, would you like to introduce the item and proceed?
Yes, thank you. As Councilmember Eklund indicated, my name is Jeff Walter. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Brown Act, the Ralph M. Brown Act. We have a fairly short time to do that in, so it's going to be fairly quick and brief, and I'm going to hit what I believe are the high points of the Brown Act and the areas that create the most problems with the councils and committee and commissions that we work with. The basic purpose of the Brown Act is to assure that the public's business is conducted in the public. It's a simple concept, it's difficult oftentimes to apply it. It also assures that people get notice of meetings, they know what's going to be at meetings of their legislative bodies, and it entitles the public to speak at these meetings, they have an opportunity to speak at them. The Brown Act only applies to local legislative bodies, such as county boards of supervisors, the TAM board that Councilmember Lukin's going to, the city council, the planning commission, and other water districts, and the school board has its own comparable piece of legislation that governs its obligation to be transparent. It does not apply to the state legislature. It's not surprising, they adopted the law and decided it wasn't really something they would want to deal with, so they made it applicable to everybody else.
Does that include HOAs?
It does not include HOAs. It's public bodies. Private associations are typically not covered. It also only covers, yes?
Jeff, with some exceptions, if there's money being given to an entity from the public, as well as also if we happen to own the facility, like Marin Valley.
Yes, we'll get into that in a second. You have to have two things before the Ralph M. Brown Act applies. One, you have to have a local legislative body, and two, you need to have a meeting of that body. If you don't have those two things in operation, then it doesn't apply. So, let's start with what a legislative body means. Well, the law says it certainly means the city council. It also means any committee, board, or commission created by formal action of the council, whether it's advisory or not. So, if the council decides to form a committee of seventeen people to study freeway noise generated by Highway 101, that committee, all seventeen members, are subject to the Brown Act, and we'll learn a little bit later on what that means. It also applies to boards, committees, or commissioners that govern private corporations or entities that receive money from the city, and one of the city's council members sits as a voting member of that body. Something comes to mind fairly quickly, chambers of commerce oftentimes receive money from their cities, but most often, those chambers of commerce do not have on the board a voting member who happens to be a council member. It's often structured that way, to avoid having to comply with the Brown Act. It's not unusual for a staff person to be on a chamber's board as a non-voting member or an advisory member. In those cases, still, the Brown Act does not apply. It also applies to bodies that are created by the city council to exercise authority that the council might otherwise have the power to exercise. Some examples of that are the Downtown Business Improvement District. The BID is subject to the Brown Act, it not only receives money from the city, but even if it didn't, and it was only financed through the assessments that it levies every year, because it is discharging a function that the council could otherwise discharge, it's subject to the Brown Act. The Navado Community Television Organization is also subject to the Brown Act. What doesn't, what does a, what is not a legislative body? Oftentimes, that creates the major, some of the major disputes under the Brown Act. One of the things that is not a body that's governed by the Brown Act are committees of a legislative body. So, the council can create committees of its own members, and as long as those committees are made up of two or less, typically two, having a committee of one person is a little nonsensical, but if you have two council members who are, who have been created as a committee by the city council to study a particular issue or act as a budget committee year in and year out, they are also exempt from the Brown Act. There are some exceptions to that. If this committee exists for a long period of time, let's assume that my example was a budget committee, if the council creates a budget committee of two council members who every year review the budget, make recommendations to the council, that committee itself is subject to the Brown Act, it's called a standing committee. I had a gentleman come up to me earlier this evening asking about the PAC that controls the mobile home park that the city owns. The PAC is subject to the Brown Act, receives money from the city, it's discharging obligations that the council could otherwise discharge, the council is the owner of that park, it could actually manage the park if it wanted to, but it's decided not to. So, the PAC is subject to the Brown Act, the PAC could create committees of its own members. I understand the PAC has five members, it could create a committee of two people to study the drainage situation in the northwest corner of the mobile home park, and come back in three months with a report. That committee is considered ad hoc, has a short duration, a finite project task, and once that task is over, that committee will disappear. It does not need to comply with the Brown Act. It can meet privately, that's the main, that's the chief component of a committee that is not subject to the Brown Act. You can meet privately, you don't have to give notice, you don't have to have the public invited, the public is not entitled to come in and make comment, you can meet at the coffee shop by yourself. You can, however, enlist the aid of staff or professionals to help you discharge your duties without worrying about the Brown Act. So, the city council, for example, or the PAC, could create a committee, two members to study, as I mentioned before, noise from the freeway. That two-person committee could, in fact, however, enlist the support of the city manager, the city engineer, and others to help discharge their duty to study the noise and come with, back with a report. That will not, however, require them to have public meetings, invite the public to attend, and receive comment. Again, it could all be done all in private. That's the chief, as I said before, that's the chief thing that the Brown Act requires once you're subject to it. You are subject to noticing your meetings, inviting the public, and listening to the public speak. If you're not subject to the Brown Act, you can do your business in private.
Jeff, do you want to take questions at the end, or, whoops?
Jeff, do you want to take questions at the end or as you're going through?
I think we should do that. We have such a short time, I'd like to get through some, some issues, and if we have time at the end, we can answer questions, so hopefully, people can remember them or write them down.
So, if you do have questions, be sure to write them down, I know I'm writing some down too, so Jeff, if you can give your presentation, and then we'll continue, because we have the room until, I believe, eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have a quorum issue, I must advise you that if, upon-
Right, we don't have to conduct business, but-
That's true.
That's-
One-
Uh, Councilmember Reckland, I do want to mention, uh, I do have a TAM board meeting tonight that's at seven o'clock. Uh, I, based off of how this meeting goes, we might be able to get everything done in time. But if you see me quietly get up and leave at six forty-five, it's not because I'm bored. Uh, it's because I'm going to another meeting, so.
Great, and I really appreciate you, uh, coming here first and then, uh, going to that other, uh, meeting that I know is very important. Um, so, uh, we'll take, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, agenda. So, Amud?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Drew, seconded by Councilmember Lukin, all, and, uh, Terry, could you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye, and thank you very much, Terry. Um, at this point, I'd like you, um, all to meet, if you haven't met before, our city attorney, uh, Jeff Walters. And he has been working for the city of Nevada for over two decades. And, um, his, him and his firm have been doing an outstanding job. And they also do a lot of other cities in, um, the North Bay. Um, so, we get the advantage of, um, a lot of work that the other cities are doing as well. So Jeff, would you like to introduce the item and, and, uh, proceed?
Yes, thank you. As, uh, Councilmember Reckland indicated, my name is Jeff Walter. Uh, tonight, we're gonna discuss, uh, the Brown Act, the Ralph M. Brown Act. We have a fairly short time to do that in, so it's going to be, uh, fairly, uh, quick and brief. And I'm going to, uh, hit what I believe are the high points of the Brown Act and the areas that create the most problems with the councils and committee and commissions that, that we work with. The basic purpose of the Brown Act is to assure that the public's business is conducted in the public. It's a simple concept, it's difficult oftentimes to apply it. It also assures that people get notice of meetings, they know what's going to be at meetings of their legislative bodies, and it entitles, uh, the public to speak at these meetings, they have an opportunity to speak at them. The Brown Act only applies to local legislative bodies such as county boards of supervisors, uh, the TAM board that, uh, Councilmember Lukin's going to, the city council, the planning commission, and, uh, other water districts and the school board has its own, uh, comparable, uh, piece of legislation that governs, uh, its, uh, obligation to be transparent. It does not apply to the state legislature. That's not surprising, they adopted the law and decided it wasn't really something they would want to deal with. So they made it applicable to everybody else. It does not include HOAs. It's public bodies. Private associations are typically not covered. It also only covers, yes?
Jeff, um, uh, with some exceptions, um, if there's money being given to, um, an entity, uh, from the public as well as also if we happen to own the facility like Marin Valley?
Yes, um, we'll get into that in a second. You have to have two things before the Ralph M. Brown Act applies. One, you have to have a local legislative body, and two, you need to have a meeting of that body. If you don't have those two things in operation, then it doesn't apply. So let's start with what a legislative body means. Well, the, the law says it certainly means a city council. It also means any committee, board, or commission created by formal action of the council, whether it's vi- advisory or not. So if the council decides to form a committee of seventeen people to study, um, uh, freeway noise generated by Highway one oh one, that committee, all seventeen members are subject to the Brown Act. And we'll learn a little bit later on what that means. It also applies to boards, committees, or commissioners that, um, govern private corporations or entities that receive money from the city, and one of the city's council members sits as a voting member of that body. Something comes to mind fairly quickly, chambers of commerce oftentimes receive money from their cities. But most often, those chambers of commerce do not have on the board a voting member who happens to be a council member. It's often structured that way to avoid having to comply with the Brown Act. It's not unusual for a staff person to be on a chamber's board as a non-voting member or an advisory member. In those cases, still, the Brown Act does not apply. It also applies to, um, uh, bodies that are created by the city council to exercise authority that the council might otherwise have the power to exercise. Some examples of that are the Downtown Business Improvement District. The BID is subject to the Brown Act, it not only receives money from the city, but even if it didn't, and it was only financed through the assessments that it, uh, levies every year, because it is discharging a function that the council could otherwise discharge, it's subject to the Brown Act. The Nevada Community Television Organization is also subject to the Brown Act. What doesn't, what does a, what is not a legislative body? Oftentimes, that creates the major, some of the major disputes, you know, under the Brown Act. One of the things that is not a body that's governed by the Brown Act are committees of a legislative body. So the council can create committees of its own members. And as long as those, uh, committees are made up of two or less, typically two, having a committee of one person is a little nonsensical. But if you have two council members who are ma- who have been created as a committee by the city council to study a particular, uh, issue or act as a budget committee year in and year out, uh, they are also exempt from the Brown Act. There are some exceptions to that. If this committee s- exists for a long period of time, let's assume that my example was a budget committee. If the council creates a budget committee of two council members who every year review the budget, make recommendations to the council, that committee itself is subject to the Brown Act, it's called a standing committee. I had a gentleman come up to me earlier, uh, this evening, asking about the PAC that, uh, controls the mobile home park that the city owns. The PAC is subject to the Brown Act, receives money from the city. Uh, it's discharging, um, obligations that the council could otherwise discharge. The council is the owner of that park, it could actually manage the park if it wanted to, but it's decided not to. So the PAC is subject to the Brown Act, the PAC could create committees of its own members. I understand the PAC has five members, it could create a mem- a committee of two people to study the, uh, drainage, uh, situation in the northwest corner of the mobile home park, and come back in three months with a report. That committee is considered ad hoc, has a short duration, a finite project task, and once that task is over, that committee will disappear. It does not need to comply with the Brown Act. It can meet privately, that's the main, that's the key, chief component of a committee that is not subject to the Brown Act. You can meet privately, you don't have to give notice, you don't have to have the, the public invited, the public is not entitled to come in and make comment, you can meet at the coffee shop by yourself. You can, however, enlist the aid of staff or professionals to help you discharge your duties without worrying about the Brown Act. So the city council, for example, or the PAC, could create a committee, two members to study, as I mentioned before, noise from the freeway. That two-person committee could in fact, however, enlist the support of the city manager, the city engineer, and others to help discharge their duty to study that, the noise and come with, back with a report. That will not, however, require them to have public meetings, invite the public to attend, and receive comment. Again, it could all be done all in private. That's the chief, as I said, uh, before, that's the chief thing that the Brown Act requires once you're subject to it. You are subject to noticing, your meetings, inviting the public, and listening to the public speak. If you're not subject to the Brown Act, you can do your business in private.
Jeff, do you want to take, uh, questions at the end, or, whoops?
Jeff, do you want to take questions at the end or as you're going through?
I think we should do that. Uh, we have such a short time, I'd like to get through some, some issues, and if we have time at the end, we can answer questions. So hopefully, people can remember them or write them down.
Okay, so, so if you do have questions, be sure to write them down, I know I've, um, writing some down too. So Jeff, if you can give your presentation and then we'll, um, continue, because we have the room until, I believe, eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you. We have a, we have a quorum issue, I must advise you that if, if, uh-
Right.
Upon-
Well, we don't have to conduct business, but-
That's true.
That's-
One of the things that, that gets confusing in this arena is that if the, if the council, or the PAC, or some other body, uh, that's subject to the Brown Act decides to create a committee of its own members of two people that, to try to avoid, um, having to have those meetings subject to the noticing and, and the procedural requirements of the Brown Act, they also will, um, sometimes create a committee with the two council members and then also identify three or four other people to be on that committee. That instantaneously causes the Brown Act to apply to that group. Um, again, a committee can be formed with just the two members who can then enlist the aid of other people. But if the other people are actually named as members of that committee and they're not members of the, of the legislative body itself, then that means that that committee as a whole has to comply with the procedural requirements of the Brown Act. That, uh, does not apply to, the Brown Act does not apply to the creation of a committee that's done by an individual council member. An individual council member can, on his or her own, form a committee to advise that council member, uh, on various items. That committee is not subject to the Brown Act. What's a meeting? Three council members or five council members go to a movie together. Does that have to be no- a notice under the Brown Act and allow the peo- the, the public to come to the mo- movie theater and speak to the council while they're watching the movie? Obviously, no. Purely social events are not re- uh, subject to the Brown Act. How about conferences, going to the, a conference of the League of California Cities? They also are not subject to the Brown Act, provided that the council members do not talk amongst themselves in a private setting about items that are coming before them at the city hall. They can, however, as part of the agenda of that conference, meet together. For example, if they're breakout sessions or sorretts that they, uh, are invited to participate in, they can participate in those. It's wise, however, that they, for example, if there's a discussion is about the housing element, um, they certainly can talk about the importance of the housing element, et cetera, et cetera. But when they start talking about identifying sites at the city for affordable housing opportunities, that gets problematic. So you need to, council members and other legislative body members who go to conferences, planning commissioners, for example, who'll go to Sonoma State University for, for lectures or seminars, or even to the League Cali- of California Cities, uh, training sessions, uh, planning commissioners, if there's a majority attending a, a, a session, they need to be careful in not discussing amongst themselves in private an item that's coming before them, um, to make a decision on that item. So those, those things need to be, uh, weighted on, uh, those items need to be, uh, s- set aside for the time being and only addressed in a publicly noticed meeting before the commission, where the public knows that they're going to be talking about it and then can address the commission or the council, uh, to give their input. One of the, um, biggest problems with what is a meeting, um, is the possibility that more than two council members or two commissioners, if it's a five-member body, are meeting in private, discuss some item that's within their, their purview, and then one of them talks to another council member, another commissioner, all in private. And they all share through this sort of serial, series of meetings, their individual ideas, so that at some point, three of them know what each of the others thinks about a particular item, developing a collective concurrence, uh, on taking action regarding a particular item. That is prohibited by the Brown Act. Even if you do that over the phone, or even if you do that through other intermediaries, or even if you do that by email or text, you are not permitted to, through these means, to learn through a series of contacts what three or more council members, a majority or more of your body, are thinking in a particular matter that's before your body for decision-making, that's prohibited. One of the problems that, that, uh, we get into in this area is that sometimes these violations are sort of not inflicted by the council member or the commissioner, or the PAC member. A very controversial item is coming before your body, and the press calls each one of the council members or commissioners and says, "What do you think about this item that's gonna, you're gonna decide upon in two weeks?" You know what, um, Bobby Sue, your, your fellow, uh, commissioner or council member told me? And how about Sally, you know what she said? If the med- media or, uh, any other person is sharing with you what others are telling, on the commissioner, the council, or the body are telling them, you're running afoul of the Brown Act. It's very advisable for you to tell the person who's talking to you that you don't want to hear what the other commissioner or other fellow board members said about a particular item. Just simply tell, tell them you're a listener, an active listener, you'll hear what they have to say. Uh, you might give them some input, but, uh, you do not know, you do not want to know what the other, um, people who are ser- are serving with you on the board have said about a particular topic. Emails and texts are a particularly problematic area of this, uh, of this portion of the law. First of all, as a public official, a recent California Supreme Court decision handed down in the middle part of this year said, "All of your texts and all of your emails that deal with the public's business are subject to public disclosure." Anybody can submit a request to the city and ask for copies or access, electronic access to your texts and emails that deal with the public's business, and you're required to disclose them. It's, uh, there's two or three hints. One, if you are a public official, you might want to think about creating a separate email address that only deals with the business, the city's business that you're dealing with. Uh, it gets very, uh, difficult oftentimes if you're using your own personal email address to mix personal communications with the city's communications. Because if in fact you're subject to a public records request that the requister is entitled to, and, and if it, uh, goes to court, the court's entitled to look through, uh, your email, emails and texts for the last whatever number of years are in, at stake, and see whether or not you properly disclose, uh, those things that may be considered public or not. The Supreme Court ruled that if in fact, um, a person has used their own private, uh, mobile device or other computer, et cetera, to text messages or send emails, and has combined both personal and city-related, uh, texts and messages, that the first review level is to be conducted by the public official, him or herself. It's, it's a bit of a, uh, on-your-honor, an honor system here. And you are entitled as a public official to go through all of your emails and cull out those that apply to the city's business and not, that are not the ones that are personal. You must typically fi- uh, sign a statement or attest that you've done that, that you understand the law, and you've done a good faith, uh, job in trying to just extract those that deal with the city's business. The court recognized that it often is the case that even emails that deal with the city are not always related to the city's business. It gave a hypothetical of a public employee emailing to a friend that, uh, the, the employee who, who was, the public employees in the next cubicle, um, had a, a large deodorant problem. Um, is that a, a subject of public business? And the court said, "No, no, that's not." But if that person next door to you in the cubicle was taking bribes from a contractor to, uh, uh, secure approval of, uh, the contractor's project, that's the city's business, and, uh, the public has the right to know that you've been texting about that, and that text will be disclosed to the public. Those are pretty extreme examples, I appreciate it. But the, the concept here is that you need to be careful, and you need to assume that most, if not all, of your texts and emails that deal with the city, if you're a city commissioner or on some board for the city, an employee, are subject to public disclosure. Particularly problematic are email chains. You get an email chain that started, uh, with next door, uh, the neighbors are outraged about X, Y, and Z. They send an email to three council members who are friends of theirs, and then those council members forward the, uh, one of, uh, one of them's, the council members forwards it to another friend of his or her. That person then rots another message back to the original, uh, generator of the email. That person then emails it to fourteen other people in New York, those people then email it back to, you know how these email chains go? And before long, it comes back to the council members who were part of it, and if they read through all the email chain, they'll see that three other council members have ar- have already received this email. Some of them may have actually sent an email that's part of the chain, and you're reading what two or three of your fellow council members or commissioners or board members have said. That's a huge problem, if it's a particular matter involving the city, and even i- even more problematic if it's coming before the, that body in the near future. You cannot develop what's called a collective concurrence, uh, on, uh, parti- to take action on a particular item. One of the, uh, attachments to the materials I provided to you, starting at page two forty-four. Our, our paginator, uh, machine went haywire, so I apologize. You'll find these pages are, are completely, uh, in wrong order, and it, it's just crazy. Um, this should be page twenty-four, but it says two four four.
Oh, got it.
It's at the end of this packet. It's a copy of an Attorney General's opinion, where the Attorney General of, of California was asked whether or not a majority of a board of a local public agency, can they email each other to develop, to develop a collective concurrence as to some action to be taken, as long as they also send their emails to the secretary of the board and to the chair of the board, and the emails are posted on the a- agency's internet website, and a printed version of each email is rep- reported at the next public meeting. Would that be acceptable under the Brown Act? And the Attorney General said, "No." You cannot, through a private exchange of emails before a board meeting takes place, develop some kind of concurrence on an item that, that, that you're supposed to be acting on at that board meeting. And the, the AG had a very broad definition of what kind of information, if it's exchange, constitutes this collective concurrence, developing a concurrence. If you take a look at page twenty-five, s- sort of two five five, at the bottom, I've written in the margin, the right-hand margin, a line that indicates some of the things that the AG said. If you're exchanging this kind of information privately, and there's a majority of the board doing this through email or text, um, this becomes a problem under the Brown Act. So to develop a collective concurrence, such activity would include any exchange of facts, or, as we have previously explained, substantive discussions which advance or clarify a member's understanding of an issue or facilitate an agreement or compromise amongst the members. This is the kind of thing that if you're doing through emails or texts or phone calls amongst a, a majority of your, your board, uh, you'll be running afoul of the Brown Act. So, avoid it. Certainly, exchanging emails on administrative, uh, appointment kind of things, that will you, are you available to meet, uh, next Tuesday night for a closed session, those sorts of things can be done through email, uh, or privately. Whenever I send an email to, um, a, a council, uh, the full council, I typically at the bottom say, "Do not reply all." I encourage, uh, staff to do the same if they're sending an email to the entire commission or to an entire board, "Do not reply all." This helps you avoid hitting that little button on your computer that says, "Reply all." Um, it, it helps a little bit, because if you do that, then everybody in that email gets to see what you're saying. And, uh, that's a, that's a problem in the Brown Act, if you're doing it privately. What is not a meeting? Well, certainly, a meeting, a one-on-one meeting between a council member or a board member and a constituent is not covered by the Brown Act. You don't have to give notice and have the public there to listen to what you say. As I said before, attending conferences or seminars typically are not, uh, meetings that require a, a notice and have the public attend and, and make comment about what you're, you're saying or hearing. Another, uh, thing that is not, uh, a public meeting is a meeting that is open and publicized, but organized by a person or organization other than the city. So a neighborhood meeting, or a meeting of an HOA, where they invite a council member or, um, council members or co- planning commissioners or other board members that are board members of a city body, those are not public meetings either, and they don't need to be noticed. There doesn't need to be an agenda prepared, but they need, need to be open and publicized. And the, the law doesn't describe what that means. Typically, taking the position that certainly email blasts, um, Facebook postings, uh, next-door postings, local, in the old days, you know, posting at the local, uh, uh, laundromat, at the, at the post office, and a couple of telephone poles near the au- the place where the meeting was gonna take place, probably made that open and publicized, as long as you allow, you as this organization, allow anybody who wants to come to the meeting in. So if you're holding a meeting in your, your living room, and you've got twenty-five people, twenty-five neighbors there, and somebody who you do not know still wants to come in, they must. In order to allow the council members, a majority of them can come to that meeting too. Uh, but if you don't allow everybody who wants to come, then you can't allow the majority of the council members to come. Only two would be allowed to attend that meeting. That is in contrast to a meeting s- set up by city staff. A meeting organized and set up by city staff to discuss a particular item which invites neighbors to come in and learn about a particular topic, that is subject to the Brown Act, if a majority of the council wants to attend. And if the council has not made prior arrangements about that meeting, i.e., if it hasn't been noticed as a council meeting, then it's first come, first served. The first two council members who show up at that meeting are the, the only ones that can attend. That sometimes creates difficulty amongst the council. So those meetings need to be very carefully planned ahead, and if there is going to be a majority interest in attending these meetings that are created and, uh, put on by staff, then they should be noticed as a council meeting. As a member of, um, a city board, you're entitled to go to a council meeting or other meetings of other boards, uh, that are governed by the Brown Act, who have properly noticed the meeting. You can attend a meeting of, uh, a majority of, of your board. Planning Commission, for example, could go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, that's not a problem. Now, they can't talk amongst themsel- selves about a matter that involves the city unless it's part of the board meeting itself. Again, um, a breakout session, or if the board wants the commissioners to speak on a particular item, that can certainly take place. Whether it's advisable is another matter. That is, if you're a planning commissioner and there's a, a very controversial, large project coming before you in three weeks, and you're at a Board of Supervisors meeting, it's so controversial that the board wants to talk about it because it's right along the city-county, uh, border and may have implications for the county, and the county board chair turns to the five, uh, planning commissioners and said, "We'd like you all to talk on how you view this particular project." That's not a ba- that's not a good thing to do, because what hap- may happen is it may show bias. And if this project is coming before the commission at the city level, um, is controversial and involves particular kinds of actions, bias would deprive the property owner of due process. So even if you're invited to talk about city business at another public body meeting, be very careful in what you say. You can attend, though, without worrying about whether the majority, um, has to have previously been, uh, uh, part of a notice that's gone out by the city to allow you to, to attend another body. So a planning commission, a majority of the planning commission can attend a city council meeting, a majority of the city council can attend a planning commission meeting, um, that's, um, a fair game under the Brown Act. One thing that's, uh, needs to be mentioned here, if there is a standing committee, two council members are appointed, uh, to take care of the budget year in and year out, they're, they're meeting three or four times a year, and those meetings are subject to the Brown Act. Other council members can attend those meetings, but they only can attend as observers, they can't say anything. They can't be up on the da- dais with the council, the two council members, they must be in the audience. They can't send notes to the council, uh, during those meetings to persuade them to act in one way or the other. They can't give hand signals. I have one council member who attended a standing committee, and he wanted to know whether he could walk up and hand notes to the individual, uh, committee members, to give them what, uh, what he thought was the appropriate advice to handle a particular item. And we said, "No, that's not, that's not permit- permitted." So if you're, again, the PAC is a great example, the PAC creates a committee of two members to do something. It's a standing committee because they do the same thing year in and year out, it's the same issue year in and year out. Other PAC members can go to those meetings of the two, but the other members on the PAC can only be there as observers. What does it mean to be subject to the Brown Act? It means a lot. Number one, as I mentioned before, there has to be advanced notice, written notice of the meeting. It's a re- if it's a regular meeting, one that you'd, uh, a, a committee or a board or the council, um, conducts, uh, at a certain time every, every week or every month, that regular meeting has to have a no- notice at least seventy-two hours in advance of that meeting. And the notice must identify the items that are going to be acted on. Um, typically, those, uh, items can be described in twenty words or less. The city of Nevada has never met that, uh, that wonderful twenty-word, uh, at admonition. We typically hit fifty to three hundred, or seventy words per item, just kidding. But we, we do go, we do spend a lot of time explaining what each item is all about. You don't have to do that, but, but, um, uh, as I mentioned, twenty words is the guideline. But sometimes it really is helpful for the public to know exactly what's, what's happening. Some items are very complicated and need to have a little bit fuller, fuller explanation. Every regular meeting must, uh, provide for a space for the public to come forward and speak about anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of that body. It does not need to be limited to the items on the agenda. And typically, the chair or the mayor will, I say that, and the agendas will say that, that the public comment portion is reserved for comments about things that are not on the agenda. Because the council prefers to have the people speak about the agenda items when the agenda items are called. And that makes sense. Um, there's so much, uh, discussion, and oftentimes, so many things that are said, and so many items that are addressed in a given meeting. If somebody's talking at the public comment portion early on in the meeting, and you're s- four hours later where you finally get to that item, you, you often forget what has been said about that item. So there's a practical, uh, s- principle that supports the notion that let's, let's confine public comment on certain items to when those items are called. Another issue that cr- it crops up, that once you have that agenda, then what does that mean? Basically, it means that only, the only things that are on that agenda are the only things that the council or the commission or the body can talk about and make, and hear about. The Brown Act talks about, the agenda descriptor has to lay out what the body can hear, discuss, or take action on. There are exceptions, um, and the city frankly is involved in litigation right now about one of the exceptions. The exception is that council members or commissioners can discuss and take action to add something to a future agenda. And you can do all of that without that particular discussion or action actually being on- And you can do all of that without that particular discussion or action actually being on the agenda. So tonight, for example, if this, the council, the council members want to put something on a future agenda, oh, this is a special meeting, so that wouldn't apply, but assume this is a regular meeting tonight. The three members here could vote to put buying better laptop computers for the council and the commissioners on a future agenda. They could discuss it, take action, and vote to put it on an agenda in February 2018. That would be completely lawful. And your bodies can do the same thing. If you want to see something on a future agenda, assuming your rules of procedure allow that, you can take action at any meeting to put something on a future agenda, except for a special meeting. Special meetings are meetings that are not regularly scheduled.
Thanks for staying.
And they require 24 hours' notice. So if you're a body that does not meet regularly at a particular time or date, then most of your meetings, if not all of them, would be considered special, and they must be preceded by at least 24 hours' written notice. I mean, you get the notice, the press gets the notice, and any person who in writing has requested notice gets the notice. And those meetings are special in a couple of ways. Number one, they only require 24 hours' notice. Number two, you cannot add any things to those agendas. Number three, the public can't talk about anything except the things on the agendas. That gets sometimes confusing, because I know that most of the cities we represent have a public comment portion, even on their special agenda notices. And for years, I've been trying to figure out how you reconcile that with the rule that the public is not entitled to speak at a special meeting, except on the items that are on the agenda. And a clerk in one of the cities we represented suggested that we simply not have a public comment portion on a special agenda notice. I think that works. And I don't think, I think we still have a public comment even on a special agenda, like tonight, for example. But, so it's difficult to reconcile having that public comment portion with the notion that special agendas are only supposed to be addressing the things on the agenda. We can talk about that a little bit later offline. I mentioned a case that the city's involved in right now, litigation, because the council took, tried to, or was invited to take action a number of years ago to add something to a future agenda, and the folks who didn't like what the council had done, that the council was being invited to reconsider, sued the city, claiming that the council took too long in discussing whether to put something on, actually two items, to put two items on a future agenda. The court disagreed with the plaintiff, and agreed with the city that that was permissible under the Brown Act. And the court's decision is at the very end of this packet of materials. You might want to read that. It's a very well, in my own opinion, it's a very well-reasoned opinion, and it really imposes a reasonable gloss on what happens in a council meeting. Democracy is sort of messy, and I think some people believe it can be broken down into 15 components. It's always linear, it's always A, B, C, D, E, F. You've got the agenda, just take it right down, and you're done. I've never experienced an A, B, C, D, E, F, G meeting, and you're done, or very, very rarely. The public speaks, creates some issues that are important to the body, and the body wants to react and respond to those, which is permitted to do so briefly. And so it's a very dynamic flow kind of experience. And this court, the judge, a local judge here in Marin County, in his opinion, he talks about that. That's pages 277 to the very end of 311, if you want to take a look at the packet. Who can speak at a public meeting, and what can they do? Well, anybody can speak at a public meeting. And the council cannot require that you to pay money, or sign a signup list to attend a public meeting. There is some debate as to whether or not the council can require you to give your name and address if you actually speak. You can attend a public meeting without giving any information whatsoever. But if you speak, it's not unusual for the councils that we represent to ask for the people to speak, to give their name and their address. And I've not found any case or law that has prohibited that. It's oftentimes relevant. The council or the planning commission wants to know if the speaker is from that jurisdiction or not. That's important, because you can, it's important to determine how much weight to attribute to the speaker's comments. The speakers can however be critical of council policy, can even criticize staff. Comments that are negative cannot be squelched or ruled out of order. But if people act disruptively, they can be asked to leave, and if they don't leave, and they continue to actually disrupt the meeting, then the council has the power to ask the sergeant-at-arms, typically a police officer, to escort the person out. There's been several pieces of litigation over what in fact gives a legislative body the power to eject somebody from a meeting. In one case, a fellow silently and momentarily gave the Nazi salute at the mayor. Apparently, the mayor didn't see it, but they, later on, the mayor was told about this, and that person was escorted out of the chambers. He sued, and the court agreed with him. That didn't actually disrupt anything. It was insulting, but it did not actually disrupt the meeting. I think that such things as exceeding the limitation that the mayor has imposed on the time that speakers can speak, and refusing to stand down, refusing to stop speaking, that's a material disruption of the meeting. That person can be ordered to silence him or herself, and if she or he doesn't, if there's nobody to, no police officer to escort that person out, the mayor has the power to call a recess and close the meeting down for a period of time, to see if that person can be persuaded to act civilly. I think likewise, if a person is moving away from the speaker's podium and walking towards the council in a threatening manner, that certainly disrupts the meeting. I think a person who turns around and speaks to the audience, and grandstands, and is not addressing the council, if that happens over and over again, and it causes a disruption in the meeting, I think that too is sufficient, to have that person escorted out of the meeting. There has to be an actual disruption in the protocol of the meeting. If that person just turns briefly and asks the people who support him or her to raise their hands, and then continues back to speak with the council, that doesn't disrupt the meeting, and that wouldn't be grounds for having that person removed. Teleconferencing is permitted. If you are a board member and you're on vacation, and you really want to participate in that meeting on the XYZ project, but you're in Boston on vacation, you still want to participate, you can. And here are the conditions. Number one, the agenda needs to show where you are, and where you're going to be teleconferencing from. That agenda has to be posted on wherever you are in Boston, and everywhere you are in Boston has to be open to the public, which is the big problem. If you're visiting your relatives, and you have to post that agenda on the front door, anybody who knocks on the front door and wants to come in can. Teleconferencing is not permitted in a car. You cannot teleconference with your cellphone in a car. That won't work. But there are ways to do it if you really want to participate from afar. I won't touch on closed sessions too much, other than to tell you that there are a number of reasons that support a legislative body in moving into what's called private, executive, or closed session, where the public is not invited, and the public is not allowed to know, except under certain circumstances, what is done in those closed sessions, or what is decided or said. The most frequently utilized exception to the Brown Act to allow closed sessions are matters of litigation, personnel matters, collective bargaining. Real property negotiations are some of the most frequently utilized exceptions to the Brown Act, allowing a closed session. Those normally would not apply to the subsidiary bodies of the city. I've seen a couple planning commissions move into closed session when they were threatened with litigation by a developer's attorney, for example, during the meeting. It's appropriate in those circumstances when a developer's lawyer stands up and says, "Commission, if you don't take action approving our project and eliminate conditions 7, 15, and 33, or we'll sue you," that's a basis for moving into closed session, and the commission could do so. The problem with that is that the commission would need to have an attorney there to justify moving into closed session under the litigation exception. And that often is the case, that there's an attorney from our office attending those In a closed session, the things that are said in confidence, and the documents that are confidentially created for that closed session, cannot be disclosed by members of the legislative body unless they all agree to it, or a majority agree to it. So if the city attorney has prepared a confidential memo to the council to discuss a litigation matter, that memo is to remain confidential. And what the city attorney says and recommends to the council is supposed to remain confidential. And there's a section in the Brown Act that talks about what happens when that confidence is violated. It's problematic, to be honest with you. Sometimes councils will utilize what's called a censure proceeding, where the council member who's improperly disclosed confidences is publicly censured and criticized. If it happens more than once, it seems to be a pattern, a court order can be obtained to enjoin that council member or board member from revealing those kinds of confidences. It's frequently a problem in labor negotiations, where there are council members or Board of Supervisor members who are beholden politically to certain employee groups, and during very tense and heated negotiations over collective bargaining agreements, it's not unheard of when a board member or that council member disclosed some of those discussions in closed session to the union group or the employee representative. Some of the penalties for violating the Brown Act, if you do it intentionally, and you're intending to deprive the public of information which the board member knows, or has reason to know the public is entitled to, you can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. Likewise, if you, if a council or a commission moves into closed session improperly, and seems to be doing that on a repeated basis, litigation can be brought to stop that practice, or if action's been taken in violation of the Brown Act, lawsuits can be brought to nullify that action. So there are consequences to violating the Brown Act, and they can be sometimes criminally, and oftentimes, they are embarrassing at the least, and costly to defend, and particularly if you're unsuccessful, the winning party, if it's a plaintiff, is entitled to be paid his or her lawyer's fees. I think I'll wrap up my comments at that point, and if the council or any members of the public have questions, I'm prepared to try to answer them.
Great. Since this is a special meeting and somewhat of a workshop, why don't we do a round of questions first in the audience, and then we'll do a round of questions of the council, just sort of backwards? So, because this is being taped, you're going to need to come up to a microphone, and...
I can step down here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I'll come over to one of these.
Okay, great. So if you could come up to the podium, that would be great. You're going to, please state your name, and maybe the commission or board that you sit on. We'll start over here. You want to go first? Is that okay? I'll start with one question, and we'll keep going around till all the questions are answered.
My name is Verna Eisen, and I was just wondering if this applies to nonprofit organizations?
Okay. Thank you very much for your question. You might want to repeat the question, Jeff.
Yes. She asked whether or not the Brown Act applies to nonprofit organizations. If it's a private nonprofit or corporate organization that receives no funding from the city, and/or does not have on your board a member of the council, no. So if you receive no funds from the city in a nonprofit, no. If you receive funds from the city, but a member of the council sits on your board as an active voting member, yes. The other one is that if you're a nonprofit, and you've been delegated certain duties, and you were created by the city, which is unlikely, but if you're created by the city as a nonprofit, and you are delegated certain duties that the council could in fact discharge on its own, yes.
Any other questions on this side of the room? You want to come on up and state your name and commission? It's great to see you. Yeah, you got to do it in the microphone, I'm sorry. State your name and commission. Yeah, really, you have to hug the microphone.
Hey, Rodrigo Suvara, Economic Development, ad hoc council question, committee. If the, I, colleague, two colleagues, we have five, right, two colleagues decided to form a discussion group, but we hire somebody to be paid with city funds, does that, is covered by the Brown Act? Do I have to make this an open discussion or not?
Well, I won't address the issue of the Economic Development Committee hiring a specialist at taxpayer's cost. I'll leave that to you and the council to talk about that. But assuming that the committee as a whole decides to create a subcommittee of a couple members of the committee, so you have a two-member, you call it ad hoc committee. The fact that you hire or retain or rely on the expertise of some third person does not transform that ad hoc committee to a Brown Act committee, so you would not have to comply with the Brown Act. Now, if that ad hoc committee tended to last for a long time, that you're in your second year, and you're still looking at that issue, it crops up over and over again, or you're in your third year, you're still looking at that issue, then probably you've transformed yourself into what's called a standing committee, and you then become subject to the Brown Act. But if you're, you live, if that committee lives for a short duration, has a finite project, and once the project's completed, that committee disappears, probably you're an ad hoc committee, even though you utilize experts, or city staff, or third parties to assist you in discharging your duties.
And just to clarify, an ad hoc committee can really not incur costs for the committee or for the city, with that going through the procedure of getting the committee to support it, and then seeing if there's money in the budget, and a decision being made by the council or the city manager? Okay? You want to state your name and what your commission is?
Good evening. My name is Vida Flores. I'm from the Nevada Multicultural Commission, and I want to thank you for holding this training. I heard you speak last year, and still have many questions. I'd like to start using comment cards for anyone who comes to visit our commission, and I'm wondering if we can use those comment cards and use them to compile an email list. Is that legal for us to do?
I don't know. I'll have to look. I think that would help if the comment card said that. You're referring to the cards that the city council uses, too? Is it yellow? The yellow card? I don't know what the answer to that question, whether you can use that information to create an email list. I'll look into that, if the council lets me do that.
So, Terry, just to make sure, could we get a list of the questions that need follow-up? And I hope we have a sign-in sheet, so that if there are folks here that would like to get those answers, we can either send it to them, or we can post it on the internet, whatever you decide is the best. So, because I think it's important to get the answers to the questions, because there's a lot of good questions out there. Go ahead.
I'm David Seltzer. I came here as a commissioner on the Multicultural Commission, but I'm starting to hear things that may apply to my role as a president of the Nevada Community Garden.
Exactly.
We have a collaborative project in mind that's carrying out at this point, where we are working together with the city staff on creating a community garden. So would our meetings of the board, and any other meetings we have, workshops, would they be subject to the Brown Act?
Your committee was not created by action of the council, it was done by volunteers.
Right.
And you receive money from the city?
No, but we receive, we're working together, and in kind, they're doing things, we're doing things that benefit the city, and they're doing things that benefit us, but not financially.
Hmm. Do you have a board?
Yes.
Is any council member on the board?
No.
Then probably you're not subject to the Brown Act.
Okay. One other question. What is, in publicizing a meeting, what is the process of publicizing a meeting? Do you just put it on next door, or is there a specific list of rules about how a meeting is publicized?
There certainly is for the city. For your volunteer committee, I don't know.
Okay. Go on ahead. And if there's any over on this side have any questions, feel free to... And if there's any over on this side have any questions, feel free to... Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Sylvia Berry, Economic Development Advisory Commission. Two questions. You talk about city planned meetings, like, and I'm thinking about workshops, the city plan. And if you have two or more city council member, how does that work? Is it probably workshop and council member attend?
It's an interesting question. If it's a workshop organized by the city and the city anticipates that there will be a majority of various boards attending it...
Or it's all council members.
Or council members or the EDAC. Or the Planning Commission. It might touch on several boards of the city, the issues, and there may be a majority of each board that wants to attend. The safest approach would be to agendize it as a meeting of one of those bodies. And that would allow everybody else to attend, including majority of the other bodies. So it could be a meeting agendized as an EDAC meeting. And if you agendaize it that way, then other majorities of other boards, including the council or the commission, could attend.
For example, like the North Redwood Corridor discussion we had before the workshops, that would have been a planning commission meeting then, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that would be, it makes logic, it makes sense to me. It could be a planning commission meeting for a workshop or it could be a council. The downside of having these things agendized as a meeting of one of the bodies is that they take on a structure. Oftentimes, it's not conducive to the kind of informal workshopping that you like to take, have to take place, and I appreciate that. But it seems to me that even if you agendize it as an EDAC board meeting, you can move quickly, I think, to the informal way you want to approach that meeting without too much difficulty.
Yes, thank you. The second question is commissions.
Before you leave that, though, so the city has not been doing that. And so I guess that's something that we're going to need to do some follow-up action on, that because there have been more than two council members, there's been more than two planning commission members or EDAC, economic development folks, attending workshops. So I think that this is something that we're going to need to follow up on.
I agree.
You have to use the microphone, I'm sorry, Bob.
Jeff, just to clarify, those types of workshops that have been referred to are ones where the electeds and the appointed commissioners observed but did not participate actively in the workshops. They were just there to, you know, observe the public participation.
Does that change your opinion at all, Jeff?
The Brown Act talks about meetings where public officials hear, discuss, or take action.
So it's an "or," it's not "and"?
Yeah. So I think the safest course is to just pick a body, make a meeting of the body, and move forward.
Okay, great. So that's an action item. Terry? Could you make it a joint then? Just joint, okay.
Second question, can I?
Yeah, you can do second questions and then we'll go to other folks and we'll get back to you if you have a third or a fourth.
Okay, second one. On the commission, attending commission, council member attend that, they're supposed to sit there and listen, but can they make comments during public comment session?
Yes. The other, the question is whether it's a good idea.
All right.
And I'll leave that to you. And sometimes, for example, a number of years ago, when Brian Myers was a council member and the mayor, there was a controversial project that was appealed from the commission. And one or more commissioners who attended the commission meeting testified before the council, giving their opinion, their ideas on what happened and what should have happened and recommending to the council a particular course of action. And I remember Mr. Myers took umbrage and was very critical of the commissioner in doing that, feeling that he, I don't think it was a man, he had his shot at the commission level. I think he was a minority. He was voting in the minority. And he felt that it was inappropriate. But that's a very personal kind of thing. It's a very commissioner and council-driven. There may be, particularly, the current council may not feel that way. It may be, may welcome these comments from commissioners or other lower bodies on an item that that body has already addressed.
Well, I'm saying if you have a commission meeting, meeting of the commission, and city council is sitting there listening, and can city council member speak during public comment session?
They can. I have tried to discourage that from happening because, again, two things. One, some people react by, well, if the council's going to be there giving their opinions, why do they have a commission? Maybe they don't need that commission. Number two, it may show a bias on the part of that council member. So when the matter comes to that council, that council member has already indicated how he or she's going to vote, and that can sometimes create due process problems.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
If you could state your name and the commission or board that you sit on? Thank you.
Okay, I'm John Hanson from Marin Valley, and the board that I sit on is called PAC, Park Acquisition Corporation. I'm also a chairman of a committee, a standing committee of PAC, it's called MVEST. And I'm also the chairman of a subcommittee of MVEST. It's our community firewise committee. Now, the question I have, okay, there are two members of PAC on the MVEST committee, and there are two members of PAC, different members, one of them is different, on the subcommittee for firewise. Now, my question is, now, we're not, first of all, we're not over endowed with public servants in Marin Valley, so, but my question is, can we have those meetings concurrently? Often, it's, we're discussing the same things and we would like to just do those committees, those committee meetings at the same time, have the MVEST meeting and the firewise subcommittee. Is that a Brown Act problem?
I don't think so, as long as your agenda indicates that both committees are meeting. And that shouldn't be a problem since one's a standing committee, you're going to have to issue an agenda and a notice in advance anyhow.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from the audience? Okay, I will turn back to Councilmember Drew. Did you have any questions of Jeff?
Jeff, it seems to... It seems to limit the ability to gather information for a council member of whenever you have a first come, first served and you turn a third council member away. That consequence evidently is outweighed by the need for the business of the public to be conducted in public. I take it.
This issue cropped up from a Nevada, it's been probably a year and a half ago, when Kathy Caprilla was the acting city manager. And she and I had several discussions about this very issue. And I actually surveyed the city attorneys in the state of California. There's a listserv program that we can utilize to send out an email to every city attorney in the state. You don't get a lot of response, unfortunately. It's typically three, five, six, seven lawyers will spend the time to respond. But the overwhelming majority of those responses I got supported the notion that council members, if the majority of a council member sitting at a city function, if it's not ceremonial, social, or a conference or seminar, that has to be noticed. That meeting of the council needs to be noticed. So they, basically, they agree with my position that hear, the word "hear" is an important word in the Brown Act, and just hearing something, even if you don't do anything, even if you don't discuss anything as a majority, needs to be noticed.
And that applies also if there's a majority of the planning commission attending and other bodies meeting as well, too?
No. If by "body" you mean like the city council?
No. Let's say that there's a majority of the planning commission that are attending a design review committee meeting, for an example.
No, design review committee has to have a notice meeting, just like the planning commission, just like the city council. So the planning commission, a majority of the commission could attend the design review committee meeting, assuming it's been noticed, and I assume they have been.
Right. But if a, let's say a planning commission meeting, for an example, it's noticed. And let's say there's a majority of the council that goes and just listens. You're saying that only two can go? No, you're saying all three can come?
All five can go.
All five can come. They just can't say anything.
No, they can say whatever they want. The distinction I'm drawing here is a meeting of a body that has been properly noticed under the Brown Act. So if the commission, which is a body governed by the Brown, has properly noticed a meeting, any other body, local body that's covered by the Brown, can attend, all 100% of them, and they can talk at the time that the public is invited to talk at public comment. They can't talk amongst themselves. So the council couldn't sit at the rear of the planning commission meeting hall and discuss that project amongst themselves. That couldn't happen. But you could individually stand up to the mic and speak about the project if you wanted to do that, if that was something you thought was wise. And the design review committee could be there also. All 100% of the design review committee could attend that same planning commission meeting and make comments at the time that's appropriate for the public to make comments. The distinction is a meeting that's agendized, put on, noticed and run by the staff.
Oh, got it.
Like a work session.
Got it.
That's the issue. So if staff puts on notices and invites the public to a study session or work session or an answer questions session that's not been properly noticed and a majority of the council is there or a majority of the commission is there, even if you're there just to listen, I think that requires a prior notice.
So if something like that happens, then is the meeting to immediately cease? Or is the ranking staff person there to notify the third person that came in that triggered this to quickly leave the room? Or what do you do?
Well, that's the awkward answer. The awkward answer, yes, is the third, the third person is out. They cannot come in.
Right, but who tells that third person? A council member can't do it necessarily?
Well, after attending the session, they'll know not to show up. They'll walk in, they'll look and they'll see two council members already there, they'll turn around and go have a call.
Unfortunately, we don't have all five council members here, so...
The best way, in my view, to handle that situation, if there's a reluctance to notice that kind of a session as a meeting of a body in the city. If there's a reluctance to do that, then it makes sense to me that staff would find out who wants to attend through an email even. Do not reply all. The staff could send out an email to all five council members saying, "We're having a session two weeks from now at the council chambers at 5:00, 10:00 a.m. in the morning to talk about Hamilton."
Right.
How many council members wish to attend? And if they get back only two, then they would, I think, respond to the rest of the council, saying, "Two have indicated an interest. Those who have not are presumed to not be going to attend." Because if you do, you will be asked to turn around and leave the session.
Okay, so staff then would then go to that council member, say that you didn't respond, so you need to leave?
I guess. The better way, in my view, to cut all of that out is just notice it as a meeting of the council.
Okay. And that also goes for the planning commission? So if a majority of the planning commission goes to a staff workshop, then they would, the staff would need to send out a notice to the planning commission saying, "Who wants to go to this workshop?" And if a majority wants to, then they need to either announce it as a meeting of the planning commission or take the names and only the first three or four can go, depending on what the majority is?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. The question I had is you mentioned emails and texting. What about Facebook? Facebook is also a mechanism that is being used to transmit information, encourage people to come to meetings, take positions on things. And if council members are participating in that, our planning commissioners, I don't know if it applies to planning commissioners or economic development folks or design review or if it's just the elected body. How do you deal with the Facebook issue?
Well, the Supreme Court in the case I mentioned earlier made it clear that it didn't matter what means a public official took to communicate. And my view would be Facebook is just like the email. So if you post something on your Facebook page or your wall, or you comment to somebody else's posting and it deals with the city's business, that is subject to a public records request and would be, could be made public. Now, I know sometimes people create Facebook accounts that are private and they only reach a certain number of people. Often, however, the number of people is quite broad. So there shouldn't be too great a concern, I wouldn't think, on that, excuse me, that public official's part, that their Facebook posting, unless it is a small, private group, could be subject to public disclosure. They've already disclosed it to a lot of people. It would be hard to argue that that was a private confidential communication.
Okay. Sometimes I've observed the governing body, whether it's the city council, planning commission, design review, the PAC, whatever, they may be talking amongst themselves while the meeting is going on. Is that allowed or how, is that something that's prohibited by the Brown Act and passing of notes and stuff like that?
The Brown Act requires that all votes be public. There cannot be any private vote-taking, or secret vote-taking is the word it's used. And there's a case that comes out of LA, and the city council there was being asked to act on a project, a private development project. And the attorney for the developer was speaking to the council. And the developer had brought a videographer, videographer, to the meeting to take videos of the council. And the council voted the project down and the developer sued and introduced this video in evidence. And it got to the Court of Appeal, and the Court of Appeal looked at the video and the transcript and basically said, you know, picture's worth more than a thousand words here. And it painstakingly described what the council members were doing. Some left the chambers during the presentation to get food. They brought back food. Some took phone calls on their cell phones. Some did talk to one another. I don't remember whether notes were being passed, but it was an amazing description of this meeting and how little the council members were attending to the presentation. And the court was very critical of that. I don't know if it, I think it may have concluded that in totality it denied the applicant of due process of law. There's no case that prohibits council members from talking to each other. Obviously, if you're talking about, "I need a break," that sort of thing, that can't be a violation of the Brown Act. But if two council members whisper to each other and say, "If you vote this way, I'll, next time I'll vote a different way. I think we've got a majority on this particular item. Let's move on." I think that becomes problematic because then that collective decision-making is occurring privately and secretly, even though it's at a public meeting.
What about iPhones, all the technology that we're now getting? People are doing their Facebook or emails. How is that handled during a meeting? Is that something that is okay to do?
I think that that needs, that would be something that would be subject to a policy. That makes sense to me to be a policy issue. Because sometimes people, council members are very good at accessing information on the internet. That's happened a number of times with the councils we represent, that during a hearing, they'll access something through Google that has some bearing on the decision-making that they're involved in, and they cite that. And sometimes it can be very, very persuasive and very helpful, frankly, to the decision. So I think that really is something that needs to be addressed through a policy because there's no specific law on that issue.
Okay, great. Did you have another question, Pam? I know I've asked a couple, so...
I was wondering about advocating attendance at particular meetings through Facebook. I was wondering about advocating attendance at particular meetings through Facebook or other public entities. That is perfectly legal for council members to do?
I think so.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? I'll start out on this side first. None on this side? None on that side? So Jeff, if there are questions from commissioners that are here tonight, or council members that are here tonight, or ones that were not able to come but watch the tape, would it be okay if questions were submitted, I guess through Terry to you, or directly to you? How do you want to handle something like that?
Maybe through Terry would be a good idea. She could, maybe she could assemble them, because I suspect they'll come, if they come at all, in the next four to six business days. And then I would suspect they would tail off after that, and maybe she could assemble all that do come by Thursday of next week, and then send them to me, and I can answer them.
Okay, so Terry, I think we talked earlier about when this tape might be available to be put up on our internet, and you indicated that there's going to be a delay. Could you let us know what that delay is going to be, so that we can inform the other members, we can inform everybody, including the council members that weren't here, so they could watch it, and then we can determine how much time we want to lapse before the questions can be submitted to you?
So, because we're in another facility, we are currently, I believe, having NCTV recording this, and then it will have to be cleaned up to make sure that if anyone's copying and bothering the sound and so forth, that it won't, that it will be taken out, and it will just be exactly our discussion. And that so far has taken a while regarding even our meeting, this past meeting. So unfortunately, plus also, our meeting, our city hall is closed tomorrow. I'm not looking to have this up on our website until possibly Tuesday at the latest. So, but I'm not too sure which camera's on right now, but if anyone has any questions, to please send me an email or call me, and let me know what your questions are. And again, I'm more than happy to take it and to pass it on to our city attorney.
Right. So then, why don't we just say that questions can be submitted by December 31st? That way, it gives people a time to watch the video, and then formulate any questions, and then get them to you. And then, is that okay?
Actually, I believe we are, our city hall is closed, yeah, on the week of the Christmas week, and we won't, so if anything, I believe it's the 19th, or the, I'm sorry, the 23rd, 22nd.
Okay, but you would still get the emails, though, right?
Yes. I don't know if...
I don't think Jeff's going to be working too much during the holidays either, so even if we got the questions in by December 19th, he may not be in the office to answer them, so that's why I was thinking if we just let the, everybody submit comments by December 31st, then the first of the year, you can send them to Jeff, and that gives him a chance to answer them.
Yeah, and that's fine. If you have any questions, definitely you can send them to me, and I can send them for them to our city attorney, but at any time.
At any time, yeah. But right now, if people watching this videotape, if you have any questions, send them to Terry Gillen. Her email is T.G.I.L.L.E.N@novato.org. Yes. And if you can send those questions in by December 31st, she'll then, when she gets back to the office, send them to Jeff, who hopefully will be able to answer all of them, and then we can possibly even post them up on the website, and send them out to all the boards and the commissions.
Definitely.
And so you're going to be able to send out an email, a blast, to all the commissioners and the council of when the video's going to be up and available?
That is correct, yes. I have, I also was, I'm definitely going to do that after next week, so that I'll know exactly when it'll be up.
Great. And then if, you can also include in that when comments are due?
Yes.
And if anybody wants a copy of the materials, they can ask for such through the email to yourself.
Right.
To Terry Gillen.
Yes, please, thank you.
Great. I wanted to thank everyone for coming. I know, getting, during the holidays, it's kind of hard to spend another night away from home, but really appreciate you taking the time. Are there any persons that wanted to address the limited council members that we have here on any items that are not on the agenda? We need to do public comments, seeing nobody rushing up. Again, thank you all very much for coming, and we'll just close this special meeting. Thank you very much, and have a great holiday.